I would like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular business meeting of the Redmond City Council, held on Tuesday, October 3, 2023, commencing at 7:00 PM. The community can attend council meetings in person, view meetings on Facebook Live, YouTube, RCTV, Comcast Channel 21 or 321, Zipline Channel 34, or listen live by calling I will call roll, starting with Council President Forsyth.
Here.
Council Vice President Kritzer.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Carson.
Here.
Councilmember Fields.
Here.
Councilmember Khan.
Here.
And Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
The first item on the agenda is a proclamation for Arts and Humanities Month. Whereas October is National Arts and Humanities Month, and whereas promoting and prioritizing the arts and humanities is central to remembering our history and inspiring creativity for today and tomorrow, and whereas arts and humanities are a bridge across our diverse populations that help create dialogue, understanding, and draw out commonalities between people and cultures, and whereas the City of Redmond's Arts and Culture Commission and Cultural Arts Program strive to make arts accessible to everyone in our community by providing unique art and cultural experiences that continue to build a high quality of life in Redmond through the Redmond Poet Laureate, cultural and artistic performances at signature events, and both temporary and permanent public art, and whereas Parks and Recreation Art Camps and classes encourage accessible and inclusive learning environments at all levels and ages throughout the city to actively fill gaps in public arts education, and whereas Redmond invests in arts, in artists by creating a career pipeline for local artists through training in the public art-intensive Eastside workshops, ongoing support through the drop-in office hours program, and low-barrier opportunities such as asphalt art and temporary public art calls in order to help artists build to larger-scale public art commissions and projects, and whereas Redmond is developing a dynamic city where art is intrinsic to its vibrancy and character, and where public and private sectors work together to create art, cultural spaces, and visual public artworks, and whereas Redmond invests in art organizations through grants, training, and partnerships with a larger business community, as showcased through this year's inaugural Downtown Redmond Art Walk, in an effort to strengthen Redmond's cultural, creative, and economic vibrancy. We are proud to see cultural arts organizations grow in Redmond, and for all businesses to flourish through the arts. Now, therefore, I, Angela Burney, Mayor of the City of Redmond, Washington, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Arts and Humanities Month, and encourage residents to participate in city nonprofit organizations and private venue cultural arts programs found on experienceredmond.com. And with that, we have a few people that are going to come up now. In celebrating Arts and Humanities Month, we would like to recognize the 14 downtown businesses and the dozens of artists who participated in the inaugural Downtown Redmond Art Walk on Thursday, August 17. Come on up. Come on. There's a whole bunch of you. Just fill him.
So why don't you just kind of just up here?
And down there.
So, three or four or five, five or three one here, and then five, six people back there.
Hello. Keep coming. Some more up top.
And here and there. There you go. Whole person there.
And five people on the table.
Yeah. Why don't you fill in the holes there and back?
As I say, this exciting collaborative effort between the arts and business communities strengthens Redmond's culture, creative, and economic vibrancy, and I do want to thank all of you who came tonight, and I know there's many more out in our community that participated in this inaugural artwork. It was an amazing experience. Hope to do it many more times, and I do really want to thank you all for all of your efforts and for coming here tonight to share this with us. So this proclamation is for all of you. I'm going to take a picture.
Ready? One, two, three, over here. Thank you, everyone.
Get my pictures. We'll wait till one sec. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all very much. The next item on the agenda is items from the audience. Speakers have three minutes to address the council. Councilmembers generally will not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorcouncil@redmond.gov. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you will come up to the podium and have four minutes to address -- excuse me, three minutes to address the council. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the City of Redmond. As a reminder, RCW 42.17A 555 prohibits any public comment during the council meetings in support or opposition of ballot measures or candidates. First, we have Jackson Beard, and just so the others know who's coming up next, Al Rosenthal, Alex Zimmerman, and Linda Seltzer.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can. Thank you.
Fascinating. Members of the City Council, Mayor, my name is Jackson Beard. I'm a resident taxpayer of King County Fire District 45. I represent the second-largest homeowners association in our fire district. It's 173 homes in eastern King County out by Lake Margaret, where I am the vice president and the community resources chair. I'm also a professional union firefighter, represented by IFF Local 2878, and from that position, I'm speaking for our political action committee tonight. In the spirit of transparency, you should know that my wife is a candidate for office in Fire District 45, and my brother is the sitting fire commissioner. I do not speak for them, and they have already said their piece on this matter in any way. As a taxpayer, a homeowner's rep, and a union firefighter, I am here to implore you to place a pause on any contract for services with King County Fire District 45. Any attempt to push through a contract now will only place the new incoming commission in the tough position of reversing direction in January, causing uncertainty and stress for firefighters and voters alike. This will be unnecessarily expensive for both organizations, and this council is uniquely poised to intervene in this folly. You have heard from both candidates for commissioner that the two of the present commissioners are acting against the will of the stakeholders in our fire district. You've been asked by both candidates to pause your process until the new commission is seated in January. Both candidates have been open in their supportive contract with Eastside and expressed their desire to follow the will of the voters and stakeholders in the fire district. One of them is going to win, folks, and the votes to contract with Redmond will no longer exist after that point. The will of the voters will eventually prevail, as they should. You have heard from other members of IFF Local 2878 about how we unanimously supported a contract for services with Eastside Fire and Rescue, the only organization poised to maintain the services our fire district provides. Chief Merritt spoke to you about this eloquently. You have heard about how we provide services in surface water rescue, water supply operations, wildland firefighting, and vehicle extrication intrinsic to engine companies. In short, we are jacks of all trades, and so is Eastside Fire and Rescue. Redmond is a far more urban specialist department, and they are to be respected for what they do. We have a great relationship with them, but it's not what we do, and it is not what we need in our fire district. You have heard how your fire chief initially withdrew from this process, sending a letter indicating he recognized the will of the people and our firefighters. We thought that was a tremendously honorable thing to do. What no one in my local or my neighborhood can understand is why he reversed course, or why you would wish to take on 22 professional employees against their express will, and against the express will of the voters in the fire district. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and again, I humbly ask you to intervene to pause any effort to contract services with King County Fire District 45. Please feel free to reach out. I left my phone number if you have questions.
Thank you. Next, we have Al Rosenthal, then Alex Zimmerman, then Linda Seltzer, then David Morton.
Hi. My name's Al Rosenthal. I own a two-story dental building about a half-block away from here on 85th Street. Came down here tonight because the street on 85th Street, at 15955 Northeast 85th Street, was not clean from well before December 25, 2022, until after July 6, 2023, and that was only because I kept constantly complaining about it. I've got 11 photos from that time period. I was -- had intended to drop each of you off a hard copy, but it said that's not the procedure. They're going to email you copies of it. What was annoying is when you go down and complain to City Hall, the first time that I made the complaint, the answer was, "This is our highest sweeping frequency in the city. We generally assign the work first thing, starting 6:00 AM, to try to get it first thing before some of the vehicles are parked along the curb." Well, parks are -- cars are parked there 24 hours a day, at night for the apartments and the daytime for businesses. The location, though, where I took the photos of, because they do go later on and say, "Well, sometimes we have to go around cars," the location where I took the photos, most of the time, there's not a car there overnight. So they just couldn't get the rest of the block, so they didn't bother getting the mess that you'll see. And what the photos show is, it shows the leaves, it shows them then degrading to dirt, goes down the drain, and my concern is it'll block up the drain and cause flooding problems. One thing that's causing this is your regulations on parking. You should actually require more parking. The big building that was put up next to me recently, the seven-story apartment building, it has more parking spaces for bikes than it does cars, and I almost never see people going into it with bikes. You, you need more than one parking space per apartment when you have as many as two-bedroom apartments in a space, and that's what's causing the street to get overparked in. And it's partly because of your regulations, partly the developers don't want to put the parking, and with a meeting I had with some people that finally came after the third time to my building to talk to me, came out that, "Well, maybe the owners charge for the parking, so rather than pay for parking, they pay to park in the street because it's cheaper." Well, as much as I hate regulations, maybe they shouldn't be allowed to do that. Maybe when they rent an apartment, they should be forced to have parking go with it to stop the streets from being filled like this. But you need to have parking, no parking, at some portion of the day, once a week, so that the streets can be swept, that it doesn't go down into the drain, that then maybe makes its way down into the river, and it seemed as if one of the obstacles when the people that came and met with me was that city council was not doing anything about it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Alex Zimmerman, then Linda Seltzer, then David Morton, then David Hines.
Zihail, my happy, demonazi Gestapo fascist and bandita. My name is Alex Zimmerman, and I live in Belleville for 25-plus years. You all, all very happy. I'm happy too. I'm very happy. We cut freedom of speech by 25 percentage, and no reaction. A big city, no demonstration, nothing. This slave and happy cow accept everything under Democrat mafia control for many, many years as this go all over. I speak more than 4,000 times for last 20 years, from Tacoma to Everett, in Seattle, in King County most of them. And for last 10 years, every meeting what is controlled by Democrat cut us right for freedom of speech. You understand? We have a deep, deep Nazi Gestapo fascism, and people quiet. Slave, yes. Happy cow, yes. Why this happen? I cannot understand this. You know what this mean? I am happy too right now, because this one minute is nothing, yeah? So why we need stand up and talking about this when we can have a nice, beautiful life? I have a family, I have a work, I have a future, I have a problem. Why we not doing about this? This what has happened in America right now, and I see outside what's happened with Redmond before 2050. It's not will be America before 2050. With speed what we have right now, for another 30-year, America will rise like a dream. I guarantee you this. This happened with Russian Empire, with Soviet Empire, with happen in America. Why? Because people acting like a slave, like a sheep's. You understand what this mean? Personal us more important than country, more important than America. It's this idiotic situation. You understand what I'm talking? You are slave. You understand? Ordinary slave. And you accept everything. It's not about one minute. It's about fundamental principle what has us constitution have for 250 years, and look what's happened for last couple of year. Everything gone totally. And you know this, everybody, so why you so, so quiet? Can you explain to me? Huh? Why the people very quiet? Why? Why don't come here and don't make a demonstration to guys? Stop. Stop, stop, stop. We're not a slave. We're not a sheep's. We are people. We are human. Good luck.
Next, we have Linda Seltzer, then David Morton, then David Hines.
Well, I'm cutting the public comment from four minutes to three minutes really is ridiculous, and I don't know how it happened. It actually is repressive. For safe streets, the most important action is ending the flashing orange left-turn signals and giving drivers a definite solid green turn signal and a longer solid orange light. The lack of certainty results in competition over who crosses the street first, and drivers are expected to see oncoming cars, the street they're turning onto, and pedestrians all at once. 166th Avenue and 80th Street, near two schools, family housing, a church, and senior housing needs a solid green left-turn signal. Four-way red lights are good to let pedestrians cross. Also, the time traffic, the traffic lights a lot to cross Redmond Way and other streets is still not long enough. On the subject of Redmond 2050's plan, more planning is needed for flood prevention and sufficient drainage for, and plants for absorption, especially on steep slopes at the bottom of hills, and we've built over a lot of those steep slopes where there used to be trees that could absorb water. A complete and cohesive and universe and decisive and universally known evacuation plan is needed. Public buildings are the taxpayer, are taxpayer-funded, they're our buildings, and we would need to be able to access them in case of a flood. We should learn from the recent footage in Brooklyn, New York, and other areas. Why do people act as if it can't happen here? What would really happen if, if we had a month of rain within a few days in Redmond and water flowed down the hill? So I, the lack of planning of, of who's going to go where, who would be evacuated where, who would be picked up and taken where, who signs up to be evacuated? I think that this, this is lacking in the comprehensive plan, and it needs to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David Morton, then David Hines. Haines, excuse me, Haines.
Good evening. I'm David Morton. Clean water equals life and health. Poisoned water equals death and disease. It's not hard to comprehend. As required by the Growth Management Act, the goal of establishing critical aquifer recharge areas, or CARAs, is to protect a community's drinking water by preventing pollution and maintaining supply. Toxic contaminants spilled on Redmond's CARA 1 will reach the municipal water supply within five years. Similar toxic contaminants spilled on CARA 2 will reach the same water supply between five and 10 years. CARA 2 has only two prohibited land uses, making it more likely to be contaminated than CARA 1 with 25 prohibitions. In the Redmond 2050 Supplemental Draft Environmental Impact Statement, released in September 2023, consultants suggested some solutions or mitigation for the impacts on groundwater quality caused by the preferred growth alternative. It was suggested that Redmond review its CARA regulations in a gap analysis for consistency with the current ecology guidelines for protecting CARA functions and values. Those guidelines say, first, anywhere chemicals are stored, handled, transferred, or used is a potential spill or leak risk. Forty percent of Redmond's residents rely on the city to implement regulations that address protection of the aquifer. Second, the best plans and practices cannot prevent contamination if they are ignored. The city's ability to inspect, obtain compliance, and enforce is needed to make sure that the city can stop a threat to groundwater when the land user is negligent or uncooperative. Third, local codes need to be written to grant the city regulatory authority so that they can require pollution prevention and obtain compliance before a situation contaminates the local drinking water supply. Fourth, ordinances can be specific to Redmond. State or federal laws or rules can be adopted by reference, and local authority to enforce can be included. Examples of uses that should be considered for prohibition in both CARAs 1 and 2 are landfills, wood treatment facilities, metal platers, tank farms, and facilities that treat, store, or dispose of hazardous waste. Lastly, the City of Redmond has a robust groundwater protection program, but the city hopes to bring 2,850 new industrial jobs to the Southeast Redmond Industrial Growth Center in CARA 2 with two prohibited land uses. Keep Redmond's groundwater protection program robust. Prohibit the use of hazardous materials on CARAs 1 and 2. Contaminated wells are a public health threat and expensive to remediate. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is David Haines.
Hi, David Haines, Overlake. If you want to make Redmond 2050 to be like a 21st century, first-world-quality city, you have to stop accommodating the laziness of the modern wheel driving through every block. And I live at Estera Park, where there's a construction project on 152nd and 2600 Block, and it's been going on the whole time, abusing our rights and property and endangering our safety. The city council, mayor, and King County and congressional representatives need to go to 156, 152nd Avenue and 2600 Block where the Overlake Park and Ride goes and inspect the $14 million construction project on the southeast corner of the 2600 Block and 152nd Ave, streetlight. They, they've created a dangerous sidewalk that risks people twisting their ankles and baby strollers and wheelchairs flipping over and cyclists being thrust into the oncoming lane of traffic while pedestrians cannot pass one another without falling off the ledge of concrete artistically cut to emphasize the bike lane from the pedestrian lane on the same sidewalk, split into a concrete off-ramp that disallows two pedestrians to pass each other or walk side by side or pass, excuse me, or pass in the opposite direction with their kids without scuffing their knees or shoulder or hitting their, like, kids against a cinder block wall that was cut, like, almost in a sarcastic, hypocritical way, to leave one tree out of all the others that were cut down, as if environmentally friendly, and creating a modern third-world abuse of the pedestrians, the cyclists, and the residents, where they're going to cause cyclists in handicapped wheelchairs to lose control and get hit by oncoming traffic turning into the competing same space of the worst part of the intersection. I think that RCNW and the Public Works Department Inspector should be banned from any more transportation projects in Redmond, and should be sued for the abuse of residents and taxpayers who've been cheated by Joe Biden's FDR Public Works projects that line the Wall Street middlemen pockets owning all this equipment on the job sites, making more than one shift of a crew split up into two separate multimillion-dollar transportation projects, padding the cost of the labor and, like, literally, like, leaving it totally unfriendly, creating a disgruntled foreman who picked on cyclists. Anyway, the other issue, right, is the leaf blowers, maybe only in Estera Park. We need a regulation that says you're not allowed to blow anything off the property that you're tasked with cleaning. You can't blow it into the bike road. You can't blow it into other people's property. And if you go into an enclosed courtyard, you're not allowed to blow all of the dust debris and the poop and the piss from the dogs towards the entire building of eight or nine levels. You have to have either, can I have just like 10 more seconds, please? You have to have the management of these real estate trusts that are out-of-state abusive renters, rental speculators, put into their budget for their maintenance, an electric leaf blower, with somebody qualified and honest enough in their work ethic to blow the leaves and all the debris the right way and slow it down till, like, create a pile and take it with them instead of just blowing it to the next property from 156th Avenue down to 156th.
Mr. Haines? Thank you.
You just got to check out the streetlight. It's totally dangerous in the whole community.
Mr. Haines, your time is up.
They haven't even finished yet. They're like slow rolling to take away all the layers of all the, the.
Mr. Haines, your time is, Mr. Haines, your time is up.
We cannot even touch the streetlight to let the pedestrians pass because they want to be abusive to the neighborhood and lazy, and still allow for a huge pile of dirt. And they left two steel plates in the middle of the road on the bike path with a bump that the cops never taken it for.
Do a recess.
People are being abused in their bikes. You know, we stop right there where, like, some.
We're going to take a five-minute recess. Thank you. Thank you. And we're back from recess. Our first item of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. Is there a second? Second. Consent agenda has been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be pulled? Seeing none, this is a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. And in that, we had some ordinances and a resolution. Ordinance number 3129, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending ordinance number 3110 by making adjustments to the city's 2023-2024 biennial budget in Exhibit 1. Ordinance number 3130, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending ordinance number 3110 by making adjustments to the city's 2023-2024 biennial budget in Exhibit 1. Resolution number 1575, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redmond, Washington, adopting a revised summary plan description for the City of Redmond Self-Inured Medical Plan. Our next item of business is a staff report for Redmond 2050 Phase II Policies. Carol Helen, Director of Planning and Community Development, will introduce this item.
Good evening, councilmembers, and good evening, Mayor. Thank you for that introduction. I'm Carol Helen, the Planning and Community Development Director, and tonight, Planning and Community Development staff will introduce the first drafts of Redmond 2050 Phase II Policy Topics. Remember, previously, we were talking about Phase 1. You got to the end of that process. You got to the end of that process, and we'll see those again next year. Now, in October, we are starting Phase Two. This is a great month for us to initiate Phase Two because it is, October is National Community Planning Month. So, welcome to National Community Planning Month and welcome to your event on initiating the Phase Two piece of the comprehensive plan update that we have labeled Redmond 2050. Our goal tonight is to provide a big picture overview in preparation for the study session next week where we'll dive into topics and that you can identify for additional work. We'll do that deep dive by sharing what we, the significant updates we've done on each topic and what we hope to accomplish with these updates and what we've heard from the community so far. So with that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Jeff Churchill and the Long Range Planning Team to take you through this staff update.
Thanks very much. Good evening, mayor and council members. I am joined tonight by the capable Long Range Planning Team of Ian Lefkort, Odra Cardenas, Glenn Coyle, Lauren Alpert, and Becky Frye, and you're gonna hear from us in that order. I want to set the stage by illustrating at a high level the policy development process from start to finish and highlighting kind of where we are tonight. We review, we start review of every topic with a needs assessment and a scan of existing comprehensive plan. We look for updates that are needed to comply with state law, new regional or county-wide planning mandates, and together those comprised within the first circle. Next, we look at community priorities. We look at updates that are needed to support Redmond 2050 themes of sustainability, resilience, and equity and inclusion. We ask what updates are needed to be consistent with adopted strategic plans and functional plans like the Housing Action Plan or Environmental Sustainability Action Plan. And we ask what else needs to be considered to advance community priorities. So that's the second ring there. So today, we're at the third ring. We have early drafts. They are in your packet. We built them based on the input received earlier in the process, and we want to know, are they generally heading down the right track, in the right direction? Are they generally in alignment with your expectations? These are works in progress. We want to know what looks good so far and where you think course corrections might be needed as we go forward. Early next year, we'll bring you revised drafts, and we'll ask you if you're seeing your input being reflected there. And later next year, we will ask you to adopt a final draft after it has been through multiple rounds of community input and planning commission review. So during tonight's staff report, consider what questions or discussion topics you have that you would like to see, you would like to have discussed at next week's study session. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ian Lefkort. Here, just advance the slides.
Hello, Ian Lefkort, he/him pronouns, Senior Planner under Jeff in Long Range Planning. The human services element is one of the elements that received most additions, and really, one of the main thrusts of this effort was to really operationalize the three themes of Redmond 2050 with a special emphasis on equity and inclusion. So the wide-ranging implications, really the kind of outcomes that are coming from these policy updates include things like supporting our partner network because the city is not always, in fact, is often not the direct provider of these human services, ensuring to be a good partner in both one-on-one organizational partnerships, but also fostering relationships between these organizations. There's also considerations for more direct land use considerations, like making sure space considerations and different design components are considered. So all throughout this, we hope that the human services policies will provide council with a broader toolbox and provide the city itself clear direction on how we want to integrate and be mindful of the different ways that we can realize human services outcomes. So that's kind of the high level of the human services element. And next, we'll have Odra with annexation.
Good evening, council members. Odra Cardenas, pronouns she/her, and I'm a planner with Long Range Planning. So the annexation and regional planning element dictates how we annex new territory into the city and also how we coordinate with other planning cities or jurisdictions to have like a regional planning, implement like a vision. So the updates to the regional, for the updates that were done, these reflect the amount and nature of the remaining potential annexation areas. So what we did, we consolidate, first of all, we consolidated the policies. We went from 20 policies to 15. We also added two new policies. One is for orphaned roads, and the other one is for establishing pre-annexation agreements with King County. We included some language on the notice of intent of annexation for the Northeast 97th Street potential annexation area in Rosehill that we received in August of this year. And what our intent, what we want to accomplish with these updates is to streamline and facilitate the annexation process, to support the preservation of the urban growth area, preserve the agricultural and resource lands outside of the urban growth area, implement Vision 2050 and the King County Countywide Planning Policies and the Growth Management Act. So what we heard to date is there was some interest in relocation of the orphaned roads, so we added those to the potential annexation areas map. And there was also a robust discussion on some of the potential annexation areas like English Hill. There was some interest in knowing if we annexed those areas, how they could help meet our growth targets. There was also some questions on what are the benefits of annexing for the residents of these potential annexation areas. So for the next element, participation, implementation, and evaluation element, the most important updates were, of course, consolidating the policies. We went from 27 policies to 24. We removed some of the non-inclusive language that we had in there. For example, we had the word citizen come up several times, so we replaced that with community member. We added four new policies. The first one was to incorporate historically excluded groups into the planning process. We added a framework policy on streamlining the development review process, another policy to have reporting on the performance of the development review process, and finally, a policy on developing equity impact review tools to test policy outcomes. So with these changes, we want to promote active participation by all members of the Redmond community. We want to ensure that the input we receive represents the diversity of Redmond. We want to ensure that the city has a very clear, predictable development review process, and then, and we want to avoid negative outcomes from our policies into vulnerable communities. So what have we heard on this element? We heard some comments on language to use broader terms to encompass more communities, to incorporate tribal consultation, and also to consider having impact review tools for other themes like environment, climate, and economic development. And now, it's Glenn's turn with the next elements.
Which one? Oh. Good evening, council members and mayor. I am Glenn Coyle, and I'm gonna be talking about the next few elements here. So updates to the capital facilities element include extending the planning horizon to 2050 and updating our levels of service standards for parks, transportation, stormwater, and other functional areas to be consistent with current standards and future planning goals. The intended outcome for these updates is to provide clear, comprehensive planning strategies and policies consistent with the Growth Management Act requirements as we plan and develop our capital facilities over the next 25 years. Next is utilities element. Updates to the utilities element include streamlining policies to reduce outdated and redundant policies, better aligned with current best practices and standards, and otherwise provide a consistent framework for our city-owned and private utilities. This includes removing policies that weren't directly related to our utility services. Also to note in the changes, an intention to move away from natural gas as a preferred energy source and move in climate change and clean energy policies to the new climate resilience element. Natural environment. Updates to the natural environment element include updating policy language to be consistent with best management practices, move in climate change-related policies to the new climate resiliency element, and updates to critical areas policies to be consistent with and support updates to the critical areas regulations. The intended outcomes for these updates is to have a natural environment element that focuses more purposely on the natural environment and critical areas. Climate resilience and sustainability. This is a new element that is intended to support regional and city goals for greenhouse gas reduction and resiliency from the impacts of climate change. Existing policies were moved and updated from other elements, such as the utilities and natural environment elements, as we mentioned previously. This element also intends to provide a policy basis for existing efforts, such as the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan, and address the sense of urgency the community expressed during planning efforts. We should note that this element is not required to be adopted until 2029, but staff recommended this be included as part of Redmond 2050 for the reasons just mentioned. And now, I will turn it over to my colleagues for land use. Becky.
Hi, good evening, council and mayor. I just wanted to briefly update you. My name is Lauren Alpert. We're talking about land use this evening. My pronouns are she/her. And now, all of Redmond 2050 chapters are essential. Land use is often referred to as the star of the show, and some of the most important impacts to note in significant updates are that we are streamlining the land use designation and policies. We are also creating complete neighborhoods that integrate some non-residential uses in new neighborhood, in a new neighborhood residential designation. So for the input to date, we spent the summer talking to the community about complete neighborhoods, and overall, the feedback has been extremely positive with some concerns. So thank you for your time. We look forward to discussing this further, and I'll turn it over to Becky Frye to discuss community design.
Good evening, mayor and council. Becky Frye, Principal Planner. The community design chapter will be a new chapter. We're not 100% settled on the name. For those of you who remember earlier this year, we came to the community about conversations about what we want to do with the community character and historic preservation element and how we want to approach the conversations around character. The community had a lot of concerns about how the use of that term and the policies and codes related to character have been exclusionary over time. And so, as a result of some of the conversations that happened earlier this year, we have decided to merge all of the design-related conversations in one chapter and pull it all into a larger conversation and chapter that focuses on where growth is gonna go and what it's gonna look like and feel like. And so, this new chapter will incorporate all the new centers elements, including downtown, Overlake, and Marymore, and it will include design-related policies, historic preservation policies, et cetera. So this new chapter is going to be a large one, and it will be pulling policies in from several different chapters. So please be aware that between version one and version two, there's still some merging that is happening as we're trying to figure out the appropriate places for some of those to be housed. But the intent is to really reflect on where our centers are going to be, what is downtown gonna look like, what is Marymore gonna be, and actually then have a general standards of policies that really do implement design-related policies for equity and inclusion, including inclusive design. And a lot of the conversations that we're gonna be having through the end of this year are using our partners, East Side For All and other community-based organizations around how we build for belonging and merging with some other conversations to that effect, and also design related to sustainability and resiliency. So we've had a number of conversations over the last several years related to design policies. I know there's a lot of interest on council, so we're looking forward to further conversations on this chapter.
I'll close our staff report by returning to the question that I posed earlier, which is what questions or discussion topics do you have that you would like to discuss at next week's study session? We'll use next week's study session to discuss those items and to obtain input from council on these early drafts, and then we will be back early next year with updated drafts informed by your input. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. To all of you, is there any input anyone would like to share this evening getting ready for our study session next week? I can go down the line if everyone has a council member car, so I'll start with you. Do you have anything that you would like to bring up for next week?
Not that I haven't already mentioned in our study session last week.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Sure. Well, first of all, thank you so much for the presentation. It was wonderful and very succinct, so it's helpful to frame everything. One question I had was about the concerns that were mentioned, and I'm flipping through the slides here. One of the concerns was about traffic and that impact, and I think that would be really helpful to understand kind of what those concerns were, a little bit more detail on that. Thank you.
And because Councilmember Fields might need to leave in a little bit, and he's online, I'm gonna go to him next.
Thank you, mayor. So I was very intrigued, I would say, by the sustainability of climate, the new policies identified, there's a whole list of them, CR 2 through 1 million or whatever it was. And I think that there was some specifics that I was happy to see about what changes we will do. I'm looking, I would like to get underneath a little bit of the high-level sort of promise that we're going to do the right thing. That's when I read it, I'm being a little bit facetious, sorry, but some of it is just, you know, words that say we're gonna do best practices and we're going to make sure that our budget aligns with our sustainability needs. And that is a great start, but will we be able to, in this study session, get underneath that into some strategies or some specifics about changes that we'll make? And I would use tonight's public testimony as a pretty good example, and you do address it in your policies, which is, are we certain that we're not creating a water runoff, a potential disaster in Redmond by eliminating some of the natural absorption barriers? So will, I guess ultimately, the question is, how far at this point in this process will we be able to understand how these policies will make a direction on sustainability and mitigation of climate impacts?
Thank you. Councilmember Kritzer.
First, I have one question for you, and then I have a comment. Just curious, in terms of preparing for the next, for the study session, are you planning to have us go through the discussion based on the comments you're getting tonight, or are we gonna actually get a chance to hear from you on each of these elements and have a discussion? I'm just trying to orient in terms of what we should expect.
I think we will certainly go, we can, we will certainly respond in writing to what you identified tonight. I know at the last study session, we provided that information in writing, but we had a more free-form conversation around interests that council had and directions council wanted to go, and I think I would kind of leave that up to council leadership and Director Helen to kind of figure out a strategy for that for next week, but we're open.
Great, because I guess I would say I am really interested in getting a chance for us to look at each of these elements since they're all so important. So I'm happy to follow up with, between council leadership and the mayor and Director Helen to make sure we can have a thoughtful discussion because there's so much in here. So I just want to make sure that we can all be prepared for what we're gonna discuss, and especially if people aren't raising exact questions tonight, but there may be questions that are coming up on some of these if we get the chance to hear more about what you all have dove into as you've done this work. And thank you for this really thoughtful work. One of the questions that I have is just if you can, on a couple of these, to share a little bit more about your approach, especially on the ones that are some of the newer elements that we wrote anew. I would love to be able to hear about how you put those together. In particular, on the climate element, I'm interested to know what in there is above and beyond, since we took a lot of things from our existing plans, I imagine, and we took things that were spread kind of across, as well as there were some state policy baselines that we had to do based on the legislation, to know what other things kind of beyond those. to know what other things kind of beyond those pieces we have in there would be helpful to have that as a highlight. And then similarly, in terms of just understanding a little more, I'd love a deep dive on approach around that community design. It sounds like really interesting, thoughtful work, and I feel like it's at the crux of conversations I have with residents all the time about how we grow in a way that still keeps, makes our community feel really special, but also does it in a way that's really inclusive and makes it continue to be a place where lots of people can move and feel welcome. So really excited to get to have those conversations and talk about many of these other elements. So, thank you.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Stewart.
Thanks so much. I'm looking forward to diving into the policies a bit more that are in the packet. A couple of the conversations I'm most interested in next week are weirdly not the land use ones. And maybe that's in a sense because they feel so related to some of the previous conversations we've had so far. But the participation element and the human services element are about, are about the people a little bit. So as I dig into the policies, that's an area with a bit more curiosity that I'm going to dig into. Particularly, this is the area that I spend a lot of time ruminating on, you know, the role of government in human services, for instance. We come down to that human services budget at a very granular level every couple of years and have that conversation. But I think this is an area where we have a disconnect sometimes between what we want, what our residents want us to plan for in terms of their human services, and then when a need arises, what they actually expect. There could be a gap there sometimes. And maybe the past couple of years are a good demonstration of that. And so I will be just looking to make sure that our, our policies have, not guardrails per se, but, but the right benchmarks for us to flex in between a little bit. And kind of same with participation. This is an interest of mine, and the role of government is kind of a big picture question there. So two that I'm most curious about, going into the conversation next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Con.
Well, I want to say thank you for the depth and specificity that you've put into the draft so far. I think you've really taken a lot of our comments to heart and to paper. So I really appreciate that. And I'm definitely going to be going through all 200-some pages to, I have some initial questions, but nothing kind of specific, just kind of areas of interest right now. I'm thinking specifically around land use, kind of building heights in our various centers like downtown, Overlake, and southeast Redmond. But I don't have any formulated questions right now, so I look forward to that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And Council President.
Thank you. I'm so excited about the community design element. I think I'm finally having my, how Ms. Anderson must feel when we start talking about roads projects moment. So very excited about that element and digging in on that one. My only question for tonight is on the utilities portion. I know I've talked with Director Helen and Director Burt often about the ability for neighborhoods and community members to connect to sewer when new development comes into their neighborhood and the cost implications of connecting to that sewer, and looking into some sort of program financing for those neighbors to, to help mitigate that, that large cost impact. I know Director Burt has some really great ideas on how we can go about that, so I'm hoping that can be included in some of this. I think it would fall under UT 27 and eventually getting people off of Septic and onto sewer. So just, just kind of seeing that policy more fleshed out as far as helping folks with that cost burden. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I just am assuming we're going to have a very robust discussion next week, because that was a lot.
There's a lot, and, and we only have one study session on the books, but if we don't finish, we'll find time to keep it going.
Absolutely, great. Well, thank you all very much. Our next item is committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening? Councilmember Stewart.
Earlier this evening, we had a Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works. We passed through three action items for public works and worked on, got a preview of three of the items that are coming back for study session here in council chambers on the 17th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Council Vice President.
I attended the Riot Aid Salmon Recovery Council meeting, and we, we actually did not have a quorum at the meeting, so we ended up voting online afterwards, which we checked was okay to do, to approve our upcoming year's budget, work plan, as well as some changes to the membership. Those were some of the key things. And then we also got the results of one of my favorite topics, the work that's ongoing around artificial light at night and its effect on salmon. And one of the things that has come out now is a formal set of recommendations from a consultant that was funded by a provisor from the state legislature giving jurisdictions around the lake some recommendations on, on the types of both regulations as well as educational programming that they might do to be able to address this issue. Because they, we also got the results of a study they did, which really did show that it has a serious impact, this light on the lake. So we now have confirmed this is a problem and also have some actual specifics about what we can do about it. So I'm going to send that with, to the council to review, and I'm following up with staff to think about what we might do from the city perspective to be able to join with our fellow cities in making a difference on this. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? We also have ombuds report, which is missing from my script, but that's okay. We have, yes, absolutely. We have, Councilmember Carson had September, and Councilmember Con has October. So we'll wrap up with Councilmember Carson.
Great, thank you, Mayor. So we had, I'm just going back in my responses. So had a complaint about construction noise, and I've been continuing to follow up with that person to see if we can identify some of the sources on that. It's not always easy to figure out exactly where they're coming from. Then had a concern about the operator that's been selected for the, the Health Through Housing facility in Overlake and was able to get a response back to them. King County also responded to them. So that, I believe, is taken care of. I haven't heard back. Sometimes you'd like to get, you know, was that sufficient kind of response? But usually it's crickets. So then we had a complaint about one of the events in the downtown park, and I think it's mainly noise, but it wasn't, well, yeah, yeah. Talking about decibel levels and so, and Director Hamilton was able to respond to that, and I forwarded that off to the, to the requester. And then I had a complaint from my own neighborhood about one of the city's contractors on 51st Street. And I've been in conversations with Assistant Director Lynch about kind of what's, what the deal with that is and how it can be better, a better experience for those trying to get in and out of the neighborhood. And then we had a planning commissioner email us about a, the quality, her concerns about water quality in Redmond and gave us a lot of interesting information to, to consider. And so I thanked her for that. Had a complaint about a construction pothole near, in Overlake, near one of our construction sites, 152nd, that, that area. And Director Burt has gotten back to me about that, and I got a response back to the requester. And then we had another concern of a business, business owner that live, or that has their location near the Health Through Housing location in Overlake, and I responded to them. Haven't heard anything back from them yet. And that is it.
Great, thank you so much. And Councilmember Con.
Thank you. We've only had one email to the council@redmond.gov email so far in this long month we've had so far. And that was about a constituent being concerned about driving habits in Redmond. And that is something I will be following up with the appropriate director on. So that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other ombuds? Council President.
Thank you. I also had a community member conversation about the Salvation Army as the selected entity for the Health Through Housing project. And they're ensuring that we write equal treatment into our neighborhood agreement and to our agreements for the LGBT community, given their history and past on that topic. Also was forwarded and directed to a Reddit post about our dog park that is no longer a pop-up dog park. And it was pretty amazing to see that everybody on Reddit was very sad to see it go. So we got some love on Reddit, which is hard to do, so kudos to us. Also have been communicating with a community member about a waiver for a class, class action lawsuit that they have received from their apartment complex, and will be following up on that with Director Helen, probably.
Our staff is already following up on that.
Fabulous, thank you.
Okay, any other? Council Vice President.
I heard from several community members who wanted to talk around issues around tenant protections, and I also heard about the class action lawsuit issue. So glad that we're already proactively following up on that. I also received a request from a group that does organizing with youth around sustainability that wants, seeks to be able to do a little bit more partnering with our city on some programming that they've done in neighboring jurisdictions, and I'll be talking with them. They're also trying to get some support on, from Riot Aid in terms of salmon recovery focus of their programming. So I'll be chatting with them and letting our staff know what I, I hear from, from that discussion. And, and then I also received a message actually from one of our Arts and Culture Commissioners, and I just wanted to, to recognize this as, I think, very exciting is that Arts and Culture Commissioner Lata Sambamurti just recently got the 2023 Humanities Washington Award, which is the highest award in Washington State for public humanities. So I just wanted to give her a shout out and say congratulations to our commissioner, and excited to have her representing across our state and in our city regularly. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anything, any other items from ombuds? Councilmember Carson.
Well, there was one that came in this month about 24-hour pharmacy that came to Mayor Council. It's not really something that we can do much about. And I've, I've replied just separately saying, I empathize completely, but it's not something that government really should be doing or mandating anybody, you know, stay open. It will make sense when it makes financial sense. So that's, that's what I replied to, not as the ombuds, but just in my own experience, because I've had the same concerns about not having something in our, in our community, so.
Thank you. Seeing no other ombuds items, we have no unfinished business. We have no new business. We have no executive session. That concludes our business items for this meeting. If there is no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you.